Welcome, everyone. I call the May 15, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order. The main purpose of tonight's meeting is the review and adoption of revised commission bylaws. Before we move on to agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. City of Bothell is providing the option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. For those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions are not available to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. This time is for comments on issues not scheduled for hearing on tonight's agenda. Please limit these comments to three minutes. Please note that City of Bothell does not tolerate verbal harassment, and please remember this during your comments. Public comment will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 p.m. today. People wishing to submit written comments were also asked to submit those comments by 3:00 p.m. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. And I don't believe we've received any, correct? Nope? Okay. Those in attendance may also make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire to comment on the sign-in sheets, although we do not have anyone in attendance who's not staff. The Imagine Bothell notice, the city website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. The video of this meeting will be streamed live, as well as recorded, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. Call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so that everyone can follow along. At this point, we'll take a minute to acknowledge the attendance of our commissioners. Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Westerbeck is absent and excused. Commissioner Lever?
Here.
Commissioner Robson?
Here.
See her via Zoom. Commissioner Sills?
Here.
And Commissioner Augustinson?
Here.
All right. In addition, we have Jason Greenspan, Community Development Director, attending with several new staff, and I'll ask Director Greenspan to introduce his new hires, and I'm sure he'll be delighted to do so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman. Members of the Planning Commission, Jason Greenspan, Community Development Director. I am very excited to be here this evening with three additions to the Community Development Department staff. It's been a challenging few months in community development with some retirements and people moving on to different positions in their career. So, joined here this evening, and feel free, guys, once I've introduced you to come up and just say a few words about yourselves. So, Christian Getz is our new Deputy Director of Community Development. I'm also here this evening with Cameron Colvin and Jaclyn Sampson, who are long-range planners with the department. And I'd love it if you guys could come up and just give a quick introduction of yourselves so the Planning Commission knows who you are. We have a lot of work to do over the next six months when it comes to the comprehensive plan, a lot coming next month in particular, and I think it's really great to be able to put a face to the work that we're going to be doing with you, at least over the next six months and probably thereafter.
My name is Christian Getz. I'm the new Deputy Director. Before here, I was with the City of Issaquah for about 18 months and then the City of Kirkland for 15 years. So, I've been doing a lot of land use work in the immediate area. Very excited to be here and have Cameron and Jaclyn joining us now and building up the team to work through all the comp plan elements, housing action plan, climate initiative, and numerous other projects that are on their way. So, glad to be here.
I'm Cameron Colvin, one of our new long-range planners. Really excited to join the team. A lot of my background is in environmental planning, so prior to working for the City of Bothell, I was working with Clear Water Services, who's a water treatment provider based up in Everett. Prior to that, I was working as a planner in North Carolina. I've worked at both the local level as well as for a regional council. So, yeah, excited to be on board. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jaclyn Sampson. I am the other long-range planner that got hired. I previously was working over at Pace Engineers in Kirkland, where I was doing utilities planning with them the past two years. And I graduated with my urban planning degree from West Washington in 2020. So, this is my first city career in public, so I'm really excited because I grew up, kind of the area, I grew up in Woodville, but I went to school in Inglemore. I would play and I would be pop king all the time for football games, so it's really exciting just to be able to be a part of Bothell and be able to help with all the development and new things happening. Thank you.
Well, welcome to our Planning Commission meeting. We're very happy to see you here, although I'm sure not quite as happy as Director Greenspan to be staffed. I know it's been a challenge over the past few months with the vacancies and the significant workload we have, so great to have you all on board and nice to meet you. So, with that, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn off the sound as there is a delay. For commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you wish to speak, please indicate this by raising your hand. I will call on you as I see you. And if I miss some of the folks on Zoom, assistance is always appreciated to see that. Please identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate, and mute your microphone when not speaking. First item on the agenda is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Those speaking will have three minutes. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 p.m. today or forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record. And this time is for items not on tonight's agenda. However, seeing as we do not have anyone in the audience in attendance, and do we have anyone in Zoom waiting room? No. So, no one in Zoom as well, so we will close this item and move on to our next item, which is the approval of the May 1 minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Jones?
I believe there's a typo in the minutes.
Well, you should make a move to adopt a second, then there's discussion, and then...
Right. So, I moved to adopt the minutes.
Okay. Is there a second? Commissioner Lever? Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? A typo, perhaps?
I think under New Business, Commissioner Robson's name is spelled incorrectly.
Oh, yes, it is.
Of course, I will defer to Commissioner Robson.
That's who she's looking.
Where is it? How did I miss that?
New Business nomination of Chair.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, yeah, that's me, Rob Robson. Look at that. I just glanced right over it. R-O-B-S-O-N is Robson. That's me.
Okay, so we'll...
So, unless there's someone else I don't know about.
All right, we'll have that corrected. Other discussion?
Yeah, Commissioner Sills, there's also a typo. There's an N missing and continue under nomination of a vice chair.
Yes, spelling. All right, so we have two typos.
And my name is missing an H under the same commissioner attendance. Scarlett has an H at the end.
Yes, right up top. Not Scarlett, Scarlett. Any other discussion around the minutes? So, I assume those will be corrected for the record. And with that, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of adopted the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The May 1 minutes are adopted with those corrections. Moving on to our agenda item on Planning Commission bylaws, we have before us proposed revisions to the bylaws. Does staff want to say anything about this, or should we just launch in? Okay. So, looking at these bylaws, there are two areas that changed from the current bylaws other than one or two minor editing things. One is around public hearings. And let's see, do I have? Am I missing a page? No. One is around public hearings, and there's a lot of deletions and additions, but the point is to have the public hearing process here be as the staff wants to conduct the hearings. We made, we don't typically have, at least in the past couple of years, had the proponents make the initial presentation. Staff has made the initial presentation. There hasn't been an out-administered, so I asked staff to look at these and to kind of make them reflect what we want to do. I don't think there's a real big change there, but that's what's happening here. So, is there any discussion around that? Seeing none, I will say there is a typo on step six. Oops, yeah. Commissioner Robson?
Thank you, Chair. I'm just looking here on page nine of the pamphlet. I think it's step six. Is this an appropriate place to address right now?
Yes.
Or am I jumping ahead of us?
No, go right ahead.
Okay. This part where they're saying, "Commission members may ask questions to any member of the audience that provide public comment once recognized by the Chair," Chair is misspelled, but also I don't remember us being able to address the public, and I thought that had to do with Roberts rules. Is there something I'm missing here? Is this new? Is this old? What's the story?
Well, this is a new section. I can look at the old minutes. Staff want to comment on that? In fact, step eight of the old minutes I have here, "Public comments. Planning Commissioners may question the public for clarification of comments." So, we didn't engage in discussion, but we did, they did say we could ask questions. And I see...
Yes. That was where we were sort of carrying that forward, creating the ability for the commission to maybe clarify what a commenter may have said, to make sure the discussion is complete on an item.
Okay.
I hesitate on that. I know that it's a little, it is a little awkward that when people, when the public comes and talks to us, we just sit there all very stoically without addressing the person at the mic, but I do think that there's good reason we don't address them or engage in dialogue with people who come to speak with us. And I think that if we want more clarification, we can talk to them during a recess or outside of meeting hours, but I do feel like if we're going to walk back and forth with the public that could become, during meetings, that could become very, very dicey very quickly. There might even be considered favoritism for someone we engage with more, and to set up the expectation that that is a possibility doesn't sound wise to me.
Well, again, that was actually in our previous bylaws. We don't engage with people during public comment. This is specific to public hearings where they're making, giving testimony. So, thoughts there? Commissioner Jones?
So, is this Commissioner Jones? So, well, first, I think it's good for us to read this over because I think some of us didn't even realize we could do this, so it's good we're looking at this. But second is, why the change then in the language? So, the original one said, "Planning Commissioners may question the public for clarification of their comments," which I think is okay, because sometimes you don't quite understand what someone's saying. It's not necessarily that you're engaging in a, "Let me defend my statement" or something like that, but clarification sounds good, whereas the new language just says, "May ask questions to any member of the audience," which sounds like you could grill them. And so, I like the clarification of their comments, but I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with the, you know, me questioning them in a certain way.
Other discussion? Would you be more comfortable if we said, "May ask clarifying questions"?
I would be, but I would want to know what the other commissioners thought.
Commissioner Robson, what are your thoughts? You've had some concerns here.
You know, I kind of maintain that idea that it could get dicey to engage with... And again, I'm having, it would depend if we're engaging with the audience. That's a very different thing than engaging with people giving, presenting during public hearings. And so, I think that that's an important distinction. If we have someone coming during a public hearing that's giving a presentation, it makes a lot of sense to me that we would be able to ask questions, but if during public comment, we ask questions of the audience members or people just coming and giving comment, so I think that I need to have that distinction made before I can really say which one I would prefer.
So, as I read it, we would, commissioners would only ask questions to a member of the audience if they made public comments for the record and they're recognized by the Chair. So, and I think all, yeah, I mean, that's what I see here. So, someone makes, we have a hearing, someone raises a concern or brings information to us regarding the matter being heard, and it would give commissioners the explicit ability to ask clarifying questions to that individual who provided that testimony.
It does say, "Member of the audience," which is different than someone, is a much more general term than someone who's presenter. And I can just see, I don't know, just given what we've experienced in the past to people coming and giving public comment, I feel like there's a lot of ways for any interaction at all with the public, or even that being an option, to be perceived as biased, and I can see it getting very problematic. But, excuse me?
So, other commissioners' discussion?
Yeah, I'm processing it, because my question was more around another section on the conflict of interest, so I'm still kind of processing.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
So, this is just a typo. So, I think in addition to the typo with Chair, any member of the audience that provides, not provide, I think, is how it would read. And I wonder, do we need, are we getting caught up on the phrase, "Any member of the audience?" Because the only folks we would be asking clarifying questions of would be those who give testimony, because we only listen to members of the audience who ask to give public comment. Is that correct?
Correct. We wouldn't poll the audience.
Exactly. And so, I think that's what it's saying, but I wonder if we need the entire phrase or if we could change it, because we might be getting hung up on that phrase.
Well, and again, I suggested we say, "Clarifying questions," so...
Yes, agree.
Commissioner Lever?
Well, step four, the flow of this is that the staff would make a presentation of the proposal, and that, which would be step three. And in step four, we would, members of the commission would ask questions of staff. Then, during the public hearing, the general public has the opportunity to make comments on the proposal, and those comments have to follow the same rules for public comment with time limit. And what step six is then allowing is for commissioners to ask clarifying questions of a member of the public who makes, who gives testimony during the hearing.
Looking back and forth.
So, maybe it can be just the heading, clarifying questions by Planning Commission, just to even be consistent with step four rather than adding it to the sentence?
Yeah, that's good, because step four says, "Clarifying questions."
Right.
I just want to offer one other comment, in that often the issue becomes if a member of the public has fully used their three minutes, this provides that flexibility for the commission to ask clarifying questions and for them to continue making a statement versus being held to a particular three-minute limit. So, often a member of the public might say, "Well, my three minutes is up. I can't really talk any further." This makes it clear that a clarifying question could allow them to speak a little bit further.
But again, subject to the, an additional three minutes. Would that be correct?
I guess that could be the board's decision to make that clear in the rules if you'd like, but I don't think the intention would be to restart the three minutes, but just make it clear that they're not somehow unable to speak any further because their three minutes are up.
I have seen some frustration from the public when they feel like they're not being heard and they don't have the opportunity to clarify. So, while there's certainly risk, and there were times, meetings not too long ago where there was some heated comments, but it never got out of control. And again, that ability was there. If we don't, I mean, and the, first of all, it's this discretion of the commissioners if they wish to ask a question, and then the Chair needs to recognize and, I hate to use the word "control," but control the discussion, keep it from getting out of So, I heard a couple of edits to step six, one calling it, quote, "Clarifying questions by Planning Commission," and again, in the second line there, "Commission members may ask clarifying questions to any member of the audience that provides," with the S, "public comment," and correcting the spelling on Chair. Any other discussion around that? Kind of see, nodding heads. Okay. So, that's, so the next steps, closing, public hearing, any, or commission deliberations, any discussion on those?
I just have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Lever?
Yeah. About the removing the conflict of interest from the procedure. I know it's in the Article 10, but it appears to be removed from step two. What was the reason for removing it from the procedure?
I think I may be able to help in that matter. These hearing procedures date back a little while to when the Planning Commission had a quasi-judicial decision-making role on projects, where a public hearing involved either a decision on, I don't know if it was a code amendment, but it was on a particular project. At this point, the Planning Commission doesn't have that quasi-judicial type role, so during a hearing process, that necessity of disclosure isn't, doesn't have to be on the record per se. So, that's why I think the strike through came here from our legal team, in that the process is not something that needs to be adhered to specifically with a public hearing where you're making a recommendation to the city council, you're not making a final decision about something.
And Article 10 does have a section on conflict of interest as well. So, that's the discussion of public hearings, and I actually jumped over another change, and I apologize for that. One of the other principal changes here is in public comment. And while we have adhered to a three-minute limit to public comment, it was not specific in the bylaws. It actually doesn't say a whole lot about public comment. So, we were relying on what was stated on the agenda, and then I also leaned back on city code for comments during council meetings, which I was told was defensible but not specific in the bylaw. So, what this does here is pulls into our bylaws specifically the three-minute limit, which we have always had, just not in our bylaws, and then the comments about extensions and paying time. So, again, if we could read over the public comment and see if there are any, if any discussion there. Noted, also recognizes virtual attendees, which were not a thing in early March of 2020 when these minutes were adopted. It became something pretty quickly thereafter, but that was not the way we did business in the before times. So, any questions or discussion around that? So, I see people flipping, but no particular concerns. All right. Then this could be an easy one. There are just those two areas that are changed, the public comment and the hearing process. So, if there's no further discussion on these proposed revisions to the bylaws, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Sills?
I've seconded.
Okay, Commissioner Lever moved, and Commissioner Sills seconded. I wasn't too far outside of Roberts by having discussion first, was I? Because it was a discussion item. All right. By no means a Roberts Rules expert. So, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt the minutes pursuant to the discussion we had, and I think staff caught the proposals we made?
Yes, we'll incorporate those changes.
Okay. And seeing as they're not particularly substantive, I don't believe this would need to come back to us unless anyone really wants to see it again. Now, that said, then, all in favor of adopting?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. It is unanimous, it has been unanimously moved that we adopt the revised bylaws, clarifying procedures for hearings and public comments. So, that's our new business. Reports from members? Did I see?
Hello, Commissioner Augustinson here. I have two reports. One is on the events held recently by ARCH, a regional coalition for housing. They had an event on May 1st where they presented data and case studies on affordable housing establishments across the East Side. The interesting thing is, on June 10th, there will be an event that ARCH is hosting where electeds and commissioners can visit Plymouth Crossing, which is a 100-bed shelter, I think, actually permanent supportive housing in Bellevue. So, if anyone is interested, I can forward the information if you haven't already gotten it in your inbox. it in your inbox. Okay?
Thank you. Other commissioner reports or updates? Seeing none, reports from staff?
I think Commissioner Augustin, you had a second item?
Yes, please. The second item is an update on the Sound Transit Station naming event that occurred on April 15th. Sound Transit is looking for a name for the I-405 SR-522 station that will be combining the lines S-2, stride two, going east-west, sorry, east stride two going north-south, stride three going east-west, and they are looking to name it something that is recognizable, non-redundant, descriptive in short, which is a very difficult task. Some names are suggested were really fun, like Crow's Roost, placemaking names for that corner of our town. The one I like is North Creek Transit Center, and if you would like to join in the survey to choose one of those names, I also forward that to Christian, so please keep an eye out for it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look forward to that. I think they don't need another one called University since they've already got two.
[laughing].
Okay, any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Lever?
Yes, so I had the opportunity to attend the Planting Seeds for Bottles future on May 2nd, so that was well attended, and I look forward to hearing how the dots that they provided are going to be interpreted. That was quite interesting, so I can wait to hear how that feedback will be used.
I assume as we move forward with the plan, we'll get summaries of public feedback you've received?
Yes, I'm happy to do the staff report, and it's actually going to relate to that matter. So we did have two open houses. Thank you for attending, and we are trying to collect some of the feedback that was provided on our boards, whether it was using the blue dots, red dots, or handwritten notes, trying to capture that. We're also right now in the formal comment period for the draft environmental impact statement, and that is through Friday of this week. What we'll hope to do is give it, the planning commission, at least a preview of those comments at your meeting on June 5th, where we'll also provide a high-level overview of the draft plan. And we will do that in preparation for a public hearing, which is why the discussion of the bylaws tonight was so timely, on June 26th. And I think I had mentioned that date the last time we were here, because June 15th is the conflict for planning commission meeting of the third week of the month, third Wednesday of the month. So June 26th is the planned public hearing on the draft comprehensive plan to get feedback from the public, and at that point, we'll have collected the formal comments as well as the comments heard at the public hearing and provide a more comprehensive feedback. We're also hoping in July to have a joint meeting between the planning commission and city council on the comprehensive plan, in that we have a couple of different alternatives we need to get feedback on to move forward for the final preferred plan that would be ready this fall. So a lot of moving parts on the comprehensive plan. Also, just in terms of an agenda preview for June 5th, Boyd Benson, who was here at the last planning commission meeting and made a presentation and got feedback on the lot of frontage requirements, will be returning to the planning commission with the actual draft code changes as well as the action for the planning commission and setup for recommendations, should you wish to make it, on conclusions, recommendations, and findings. So that'll be ready for June 5th, so we have a busy June coming up.
And we'll have a fair amount of reading to do. Thank you. Any other reports? Seeing none, I think we've got a record meeting here. There being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
This is Commissioner Jones, motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Okay. It is unanimous. Meeting is adjourned at 6:35. Our next meeting will be June 5th, so look forward to seeing you all there, and we actually have a little time to run over the 522 workshop, right, down across the way?
There's a lot of those.
Yep. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Good to see you all.
I don't think we seconded.
I don't know that we need a second for that.
Okay, we don't need a second.